Thank you all for being here tonight. Our regular council meeting of July 28th, 2016. As you can see, out tonight, we got a little bit of rain today. I almost forgot what that windstorm was.
You mean you vote?
All right. Mr. Manning, if you don't mind, would you please answer your indication and pledge to comply with the police statement?
Hello, pleasure. I hope that Father, we come to you today, Lord, we thank you for the rain you sent to us today, Father. Lord, thank you for another day to bless this world, we're still here. Touch each one here on council, we've made the right decision. Touch each one out in the town, be strong for you. Mark Jefferson, care for each and every one. Touch over station, please, and watch over the end, Jesus' name. Our prayers, our lives, please.
Our prayers allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And if we could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Laverne?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Here.
Councilman Cagle?
Here.
Councilman Manning?
Here.
Councilman Sewell?
Here.
City Manager Melvin?
Here.
City Attorney Hall?
Here.
I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from the July 14th General Assembly session as well as the regular council meeting of that same date. If that's the case, we will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, approve.
I take it. A motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident in the city of East Ridge or business owner here in the city, and any kind of a question or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. One of the microcultures here at the front, state your maiden address for the record. You will have five minutes.
Gibithun, 710 Hated Hill Drive.
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions for the mayor and the council.
Okay.
I've had a few phone calls and people asking, and I go through the park every day. Who authorized or when did we change the name from Fred Pruitt Parkway to Camp Jordan Parkway?
Truthfully, I don't know. I don't really answer that question.
We voted for Fred Pruitt Parkway always, we don't, if we didn't, they'll take it off, change it. I know.
I have no idea.
I don't either.
Okay, we're done back.
We certainly, uh, absolutely.
He actually was the one who got the road cut in. Well, you know, you know all his, all his history. He's the one that got the road actually cut in, to the park by the state, so.
Did, did, on the big sign, did it have that on there? Is that what's been said?
There was a street sign and also the big sign. But neither are there now, and all your signage going in is Camp Jordan Parkway. It was obviously two, three, four times, just to check, make sure that what I was hearing was right, so. But I mean, it's not a problem if we can get it put back the way it was.
Sure. And I don't, yeah, I don't know if, if that was actually changed as the street name or whether it was kind of a ceremonial thing, but we're gonna.
We changed the street name, of course, all the way to the bridge.
We may need.
That's the way it was put, that it went to the bridge, not, not on the end. Camp Jordan Road, then you got Bass Road Boulevard, I think that goes in. But the, the deal was that it was changed to the bridge. And so if we can do that back, I mean, that's not a problem. It's just, his family would appreciate it, and, you know, he's got grandkids and.
They're close.
And the second thing is, and you live on the road, y'all brought it up a couple of times about camp sign signs, and I have no problem, but the last time that Larry and myself and Mr. Cagle ran, Coach Department called each one of us, and you remember, we had a meet up here on top of Saturday in front of school, and we were out of what they say, compliance, but all the signs now on the road, can we make sure that if it's good for them, it'll be good for the people that's on for office this time? You know, everybody comply. The ones going into Frohley Road are off, the ones.
Like the Assessor, the, the Assessor signs that are down there?
Yes.
Okay.
And you know, you go in that road every day, you know, they've been on the ground, the road, the road. Same way it's saturated.
Got it funny too, if they keep coming, I don't know, maybe if you, you tell me what's going on, but one, one day, it'll be, one of the signs will be attached to only one of the poles, and it will be flipped behind the other, the other guy who's supposed to. And then the next day, it'll be changed.
I wish that someday. I thought I said that.
Thank you, thank you.
We were, we were moving to the first in front. But that's all I ask, and thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I bring it up for the motion, say, back to Fred Pruitt Parkway, all the way to the bridge?
Well, I don't think it requires one, if, if it was legally.
We need to vote, thank you, dollars.
Right, I mean, if, if that's the legal name of the road, it'd be, it needs to be.
I'd like to know if it's back on, all the way down to the bridge.
Do you know? I don't, and it wrote off, you know, school's over. I remember the big sign saying that.
You're right.
Going into Camp Jordan, but I think, because I know that I have to get a, have to do a road line every time the school starts, it's always been Camp Jordan Road, but the big sign had Fred Pruitt Parkway on it, so.
Well, what, what, what happens is that, is in Nashville, similar to Jack Shaw Memorial Bridge, and then there's, if you drive them down, there's a Fred Pruitt Memorial Bridge as well. In Nashville, there's one bill that comes up at the end of session to, to memorialize certain bridges or roads. Now, and I'm not saying this is what happened, but I'm just throwing it out there. It may have been something that was done in Nashville just as a memorial, but it didn't actually change the name of the road. I'm just throwing it out there since you mentioned that, Larry. I don't know, uh, I'm just throwing it out there.
What's best, Fred, what's best was in August.
We did vote to change it to Fred Pruitt Parkway, to, down to the bridge. Well, is everybody just finding that in the records?
That's exactly right. I recommend we, we find when the change was made, and was it a legal name change or was it, again, a, some sort of ceremonial remark of the road? Well, I'm just saying, we need to find whatever records exist that, that will tell us exactly what we need to do. And I'm certainly in favor of returning the name, regardless of whether it was a legal name change or ceremonial, it needs to be back.
I do like, of course, I like the names, but they got changed down and out. We in Golden, don't know anything, they got changed.
Which one, which one did you talk about?
Same one. Fred Pruitt Parkway, same one. You started Bass Coach, I think it's give, name, it's called.
Well, once it's on, once it's on the development, that's, that's.
Right, right.
Can we have a stop and look at that sign, to see if it's presentable, put back up, back in the space down there?
The sign is, the sign is presentable.
We put it up to make sure that it would be able to be put back up. And Brian Hobbs, who is the grandson of Mr. Pruitt, had asked me the same thing that Jim was talking about, if we would, if we would do something about, you know, putting it back up. And the last day the sign was up, they were having a surprise birthday party for Ms. Pruitt, and we kept the sign up until after the party, and then we took it down. But we still had it.
Okay.
Just replace the, put it, since you guys are here, just replace the, put it back down that development, or does it need to go closer to the bridge, or?
It goes, goes closer to the bridge, it'll be underwater.
It was right where the hotel was at.
Yeah. He started from there, down to the bridge.
We're pretty late, right?
Yes. Well, I think Street Park can finally be a location. I believe it can, too. He's on, I believe.
Pretty, pretty reasonable chance.
So we're putting this back, sign back up, or we want to check out the records and see?
Well, it would be good to know what the records actually say, but I think either way, the sign is still. All right. We have a. See anyone, so we will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Manning?
Well, all I have right now, Jackie wrote that earlier, just want to say that Glenn Ford, that was his last day. Just great police officer, we're gonna miss him, and after I just pray for him, and Lord of the Doors point, then we got some great police, not just him, but we got some great police officers, retires. So, let's all remember him and pray, and give retirement, wishing all great things. And all the residents are tired, too.
Yes, sir.
I just feel like I did owe what Danny said. Being able to go back a long way, we worked the loose work together 25 years. We came up, got a reserve program, didn't like what's so much, he decided to pay a full-time publicist, so. Congratulations to him, retirement, and on his, him and his family, looking for him to be home. All his grandkids he's got, he'll be, he'll be busy. But just like, you know, glad he's, he's made the food, 25 years saving, and he has done some heroic things out here in the city. He's a humble town guy, he don't want to talk about it, but he's a good fellow, and he'll always stand behind you back, and a good friend of mine. He's gonna be missing here in East Ridge.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Cagle?
Next, sir.
So with anything either, of course, definitely congratulations to Lieutenant Ford. We, you know, we love and respect our police force. Day and age, sometimes that can be politically incorrect, sadly, but I don't think we're, I don't think we're ashamed to say that. All right, please, City Manager?
Uh, just one item, Mayor and Council. On August 20th, just want to make an announcement, we're going to have a 95th birthday celebration at Camp Jordan, 5:30 or 6:00.
Well, actually, the ceremony will start at 5:00, the first.
About 5:00.
First musical act at 6:00.
Yeah, and the music starts at 6:00, then we're going to have three or four groups that play music, and birthday cake, and just an early festive time. We'll see a lot more about it, I just wanted to make that announcement, so we're right, councilmen being on their calendars.
Sit there.
Let me see, man.
Yes, sir.
Oh, can we also have a pattern? Roll call, Frango Road, Dad, it has, like, a birthday.
Think we're gonna do that?
I like the style of that.
They're already.
Yeah, yes.
They're already.
Also be fireworks, too, so. No submit.
We'll move on to items of business. We have no old business in the items of new business. If, if council does not object, I would like to move an item forward, which would be item H, Resolution 2582. Matt Wood and John Healy are here. This is basically to clean up what we did a month ago, and there was some discussion, some confusion about adding some language to the incentive agreement. And in the midst of all that conversation, I got confused as well. And so we adopted an amendment to Resolution 2416, but it was actually correct as presented. Resolution 2389 contained the specific language where the clause, or their, or their heirs into our states should have been inserted. So I will, I will take the blame for, for the pothole we stood, we wrote down here that evening. But again, it, it does nothing beyond what we talked about that evening, that heaven forbid something tragic occur with the, with the developers, that the bank would like to have some reassurance that they are going to continue to be repaid, the money that has been borrowed from them.
That's just, I know you said it, but just to clarify, that is the only thing this addresses, is adding that one short sentence.
Right, okay, right. I'll make motion number.
Say it.
Oh, please, yes. We've got a motion in a second, but the attorney's gonna read it on camera.
I'll take mine back, if he makes the.
A resolution of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, modifying Resolution Number 2389 relating to the Board of Regional Tourism Development District Act, PCA Section 7-10111, at 6:00.
So we have a second, a motion for Mr. Gravitt, a second for Mr. Manning, again. I apologize for getting twisted around a month ago.
I thought, I made a mistake.
And you can get it, the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
No.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Item has been taken care of. Gentlemen, would might we have another announcement? I'll put you on the spot, or you know.
You say, when, what, by means?
When might we, yes.
Uh, hopefully this coming up.
Yeah, that's.
Definitely they gonna give us a free million dollar.
Hopefully, we.
I agree, the values of increased taxes that will come in.
All right, well, thank you. All right, we move back to item A, ordinance number 1013.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, doctoring annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, ending June 30th, 2017.
Quick motion, approve.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Yes, sir.
Now, I have several questions, about the, the dollars changed from what was presented last night to this day. And also, I've been going through it, and I have found that the next ordinance has to do with the change of the general administration, has to do with the, they had an organization chart.
Which is this?
Yes, sir. Okay, when I was going through this thing, especially in the financial end of it. This chart here, that you gave out in the last package.
Yeah, that's considered seated by the one that was put in place tonight.
So this is, uh, the number of employees and everything?
No, that's, that, that, that is the number of employees, yes, that's. Yes, sir.
All right, while we're going through the financial end of it, and like in administration, we're showing seven people on this chart, we're showing six people on the budget, so we got six people being paid, we got seven people in the department, or is this a feature that you're looking at?
Let me get my budget here in front. Okay, you will see on this. You'll see that the middle column is what we have now for FY 2015, 2015 to 16, the last. Far right is the manager of revenue bands. So I am recommending that we, in administration, that we, that we add one, and that is the top position. That's what I'm recommending.
Back there now, you've got one, two, three, four, five, count to you.
Six. I have six right now. This budget is approved, and you are approving the addition of an accountant, which I proposed for this budget for fiscal year 16, 17.
Let's not count her, her, Janet, Trish, Ashlyn, that's all of them. Yous, five, who is the?
Amanda.
Amanda.
Amanda, was, was she in last year, or she has been out, even put in?
I was in Police Department last year, and they moved me over.
Yes, she was in Police Department last year, so we put her in, in, because that's where she is now. She's been part of the business now.
So that should be in the rest of the end?
We need to put her on the recommend, but I did it last, I did, that was one of the first things I did when I came on board. The job that she's been doing has been more administration for administration, more so than, she was ever put over there in finance of her, of her location.
One person you're going to hire, you want to hire one more other than what you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that in the budget?
Yes, it's in the proposed budget.
You want to vote on tonight?
Yes, sir.
Even though it says six full-time employees?
The budget that you are, the budget that you are looking at tonight for 16 and 17, propose an accountant, and that is in this budget. If you decide not to put that in, we would reduce the salary side.
Yeah, what I'm saying, in the budget, you got six employees, you're reviewing yourselves.
Well, last year, I do believe that in 15 and 16, much just that deputy in that position has been deleted and replaced by them.
I understand that, but my question is, if you got seven in the budget, then we're going to vote on them now, or you got six?
Seven.
Seven, but it says six, that's the reason why I say it now, it says six full-time at the end of administration.
Which page are you on? Where, where are you seeing?
Right here.
Oh, you're looking, you're looking at the end of the administration budget? Yeah, I know what you're saying.
All right, so six full-time.
This is what takes precedent. This is what personnel counts.
You say it was six full-time, so is the salaries for six full-time, or is it for seven, as this is?
Seven.
Okay.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Diane, you had seven in there?
Yes.
Because other departments are basically the same way. It's not the oldest department. It's just six forty-four, if you propose hiring a good more.
Two, yes, sir.
So is the salary already included in there?
Yes, sir.
Same thing with the fire department?
Three. And then one part-time person in recreation?
And sanitation, I know it's had fifteen last year, now it's down to fourteen.
That was the, that was the part-timer?
No, that was probably one of those character positions. Well, now we had two, new straight sisters last year, and one of them was, barely knew they were there in Rock.
Barely went to build.
Went in to build.
So, yeah, she went to build it, one went to build it.
She went to build.
Yes, sir.
Salaries are in there for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's very interesting putting together this chart this year, believe me.
Well, I understand.
There's a lot of people that were in another department last year, and now they're, they're really functioning.
But what I'm reading is the salaries in, I'm just six full-time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, they are.
My three, my.
Six full-time and one part-time. Part-time is in recreation. We increased, we increased one part-time.
Since you mentioned recreation. The park buildings, are they parked in recreation, or are they still in the fire department?
They are in the police department. The park police are in the police department, where they've been before, yes, sir.
You have one or two, Mr. JR?
One. We have one now, we need another. We have two positions, we have one now, we need another.
That's what we have, the revenue.
Yes.
And sanitation stands on down, correct?
Yes, sir, it does.
Your organization chart, you've got building maintenance under sanitation. So you say that building maintenance coming out of sanitation workers, you're coming out general.
Building maintenance would come out, that, that vision, that, that division would be paid out in general. Sanitation workers would be those that pick up refuse.
That is what I think you had.
Yes, exactly, you're right, that's correct.
Dollar figure changed about $50,000 from last year to this year, forty-six, five, seven.
Forty-six, five, right on the nose, and we actually, actually, we increased.
You got to say where the increase is.
There were thirty-eight pieces in the revenue.
Okay.
You discovered my, my budget memo. Do we have any other questions? And obviously, there will be opportunity again to do any tweaking that needs to be done. This is just first reading. Additional changes can take place between first and second reading. We have no other questions.
No other question?
Yes.
The fire marshal will be charged, or the fire department will be charged for building tenants?
We are going to, if the organization chart is approved on second reading, then we can tweak the budget. We're, I'm proposing to establish a building official fire marshal position, and then have some standard vision coming over from the fire department, that would be the fire marshal position open, pose, posing higher building experience. I'll begin that into the site, into that thing. The next item.
Larry, we have a budget here, we have to have that, uh, before we.
I believe we do, and we.
Then we need to, I will put it in the paper, and it passes on first reading tonight, the notice will be into Congress' paper. I need to know what time you want to have the budget here, if you want to have it by 30? You want to have it between 6:30 and.
By time paid, you say?
What time for vote, right?
Yes, sir.
I would say, let's see, five, before we vote. We have no other questions, and we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Okay, that item's approved. Item B, ordinance number 1014.
An ordinance to amend the East Ridge City Code Title 1 of General Administration.
Quick motion, approve.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve. You have any questions on that?
This is approved, and now we have to come back to the true model. How it changes?
Well, this is, this is an ordinance, so this would be first reading tonight, so we would have to.
What I'm asking is after the second reading, if it is viable, then we have to come back and change it, given the administrative assistant system, parks now, we have to leave administrative assistant, change their power to the, the parks.
Iowa had, there's only one administrative assistant position in our organization, that's inclusive fire. That's now, there are no other administrative assistant positions.
So we're changing theirs.
I haven't seen any indication in my, going back several years, that that position has even been approved. As, as, we're a small organization.
Yeah.
In administrative.
I'm still, we had two meetings, but I'm just off the map.
Right.
We have, it has been ordered so soon. Has been ordered so soon, whether changed or we changed people's tasks.
I, to be honest with you, Councilman, I, I went back a couple of years with the, with the files that I had in my office, all as the city quarter presented. I didn't find anything to actually establish anything other. The only, I'm looking at my H.R. to write for my manager, my rec on that. That would never formally change, that I can find any indication.
I was thinking her, since, something to human resource in general, this. And that's what was told me, these four people here.
Because I had interest or opinion. I.
And I forget what her title was, phrase that she did.
A lot of the, since I've come on board, there's a lot of people that have, I'd say probably eight to ten have come and told me what the, what the changes were. And I said, I need to know, show me. I need justification for that. I'd like to know the justification as to why a person went from a park position to secretary position to an administrative assistant. What's the justification? Usually it's more extensive duties, knowledge and so forth. Just staying the same is justification to increase a person who pay classification plans. I haven't seen anything that, that indicates that any of that has ever gone formally by vote.
Adopting what, what is in front of us now is the organizational chart does not, it does not impact the current salaries, current wages that are being paid to.
Yeah, yeah. What, what, what we need to do is, is before we do the, the pay classification plan, we've got to do, we've got to review, update, upgrade all of our job descriptions for all the positions first, see what they do. And then once that's done, we've got a skeleton of the pay classification plan that has to be paid for and it was adopted, I think it was two thousand twelve?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, two thousand thirteen?
No, that, that was never passed.
Yeah, it was never adopted. It was, it was created.
Well, there's some, there's some problems I have with how they have, they have people in professional, technical, that make less than quarevol, secretarial. Starting salaries. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense. So that has to be realigned based on, you can't realign unless I have job descriptions that we will get. That will all come back to the city council anyway. All this does is basically note the positions that they, that they're in, in the titles. Uh, and, uh, but it's not the end result. The one change I have made on this, you have two pages here, uh, that have been changed in front of you tonight, two-piece organizational chart. In the fire department, I'm looking to take the fire marshal, who presently Kenny Custer around. And he has enough experience in the building field to take over the building official position. And what I have done is I come up with a new building inspection division, which has myself, city manager, with a building official, fire marshal position that was reported made. And they have one permit technician, co-inspector, that's the same. We have one permit technician, two co-inspector, and then I would go down to building inspector, because that would be the old fire marshal position. Former fire marshal position. So we're not increasing staff here. What I am doing, since I'm expanding his duties and responsibilities, he's also representative from the city to the W.W.T.A. He's doing a great job, networking, admitting positive results down there. He'll continue to do that. Plus, he also serves kind of as a city planner, he's secretary to the planning commission, board of adjustment. So he's taking on that responsibility. So for that, I've moved to, proposing to move that up as a building official slash fire marshal. On the fire side, the fire marshal would go away, because it's now in the building department, building inspection department. And fire department would have a lieutenant of special operations. That will take care of some of the educational items. Take this for one of the three new positions that he's getting. One of them, one of those positions would be promotional up to the department, and then the fire department, fire fighters will build, fall under the lieutenant of special operations. So we're looking at is a reorganization of the building department, I, myself, and place the fire marshal position, lieutenant of special operations. No additional people, just transfer some duties and responsibilities.
Do we have any other questions? We do have a motion and a second to approve. We can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Braden?
Yes.
Councilman Cackle?
Yes.
Councilman Maye?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
It's approved. Item C is Resolution twenty-five seventy-seven.
Resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayors to execute a contract with Southwest Tennessee Development District to provide professional services to create a comprehensive recreation plant in the city of East Ridge Park, Recreation Park.
Quick motion, please.
Say.
We have a motion and a second to approve. You have any questions?
Yeah, what is the purpose, what is the need? The need, I'll let Amanda come up, she's, she's the one who worked on this and we talked about this.
Vice Mayor, what this will do for us is create a comprehensive recreation plan. It's not just like Camp Jordan Park or an arena and not just things that we own, but in the city as a whole. So it can include playgrounds that are at schools and any other type of recreation we may have in order to better have an understanding of support that we can have in the future. And a lot of those, we can be able to benchmark, which means if we're benchmarked at the park, we can get more grants and get more money. One big example is the LPRF grant that's going to be coming up in twenty eighteen. Instead of going for a hundred thousand dollars, we can go up for five hundred thousand dollars. So just increases our chances for more funding.
So this is, so just to be, just to clarify, you know, about, about six, about three or four months ago, the city spent about five thousand dollars on a DAVG study to tell us how great Grant Jordan is. Um, and this is not the same type of, of contract deal?
No, sir, it's not.
No, no.
Go ahead.
A matter of fact, one of the, some of the items that I have noticed in the city is we've got an awful lot of recreational identities out of Camp Jordan. We don't have a lot of, we do in the central part, western part.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, that's what we need to get grants for. One item is, I can throw it out right now. I'd like to see a dog park. Where? I'd like to see a skateboard park. Where? I'd like to see tennis courts. People would ask, what about tennis courts? Where? They all came out of Camp Jordan. I don't think that's right to put everything out there east.
Agreed.
We need to put it more. This, this study will help be able to identify those areas, cost them out. And then when we put them in for grants, we've got a valid study that's been approved showing that we can move forward on.
And it'll give us the map too of where all of our recreation is located. So it'll show you that we're, we don't have as much on west side as the east side. And that will, like the city manager said, it'll give us more opportunities. And a lot of the grants want to see that we have a recreation plan. We do, but it's outdated. It was made, I believe in twenty-ten, so it was outdated last year. So this will give us another, I think, at least a five-year plan.
Good explanation.
Thank both of you.
Does this plan have to be in effect? Do we have to have these people hire, like you said, that grant's coming in two thousand eighteen? Do they have to be on our payroll in two thousand eighteen or just the plan?
No, just the plan. What we'll do is they're going to start, I think.
I would tell you this is just for one year.
Right, no, they'll start this in the fall, and then this will be done hopefully before the spring. So that way, it'll, the plan will be in effect. So they're just, they're only, the amount for it is just a one-time amount. It's not that they're going to be on our payroll. It's just creating this document, and this document will, should be valid for at least five years. And sometimes you can give them up to ten, but it's always good to redo it every five years because things change.
And tied up front, tied up in?
I believe so. I haven't.
Yes, sir.
Been a while.
Ms. Miller, have you got any idea where we plan on putting these? Park, this thing?
Well, that's what this is going to help us identify, maybe some locations that we can show to have, like, or the dog park can be located, like, we may have room here. There may be some other properties that we don't know about that are further up the road that we can utilize. And it'll also show too where some of the schools are located in order to maybe better help them too. So that'll serve the community better to show where we want these locations of these different parks and opportunities.
Also, what I'm considering looking is the tennis.
Already looked at.
Well, I think they're owned by the county.
They're owned by the county school district. And one of the items I'd like to do is, if this is outlined in the study, go to Hamilton County School District and get those two courts turned over to us. We can go for a grant, upgrade those. We've got two tennis courts that were functional, was out there last weekend. And they're, they're not even playable.
It's, yeah, they are, and that would be perfect. If they're, if they're in our control, that's when we can do things. When they're not in our control, going after grants, it would have to be the school system to do it.
They're not going to fix them, someone else. Leave them, leave them dust for dollars, they'll fix them.
Perfect, yes, sir.
And with the grant, get the grant, spend the help.
Larry? We can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Braden?
Yes.
Councilman Cackle?
Yes.
Councilman Maye?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item is approved as well. Items D through F are part of the consent agenda for grants. It's Resolution twenty-five seventy-eight, Resolution twenty-five seventy-nine, and Resolution twenty-five eighty.
We have to reach each agenda at one. We just like a motion up for it. Motion up through.
I like exercising your vocal cords, please. We have a, we have a motion, I'm sorry, can we get a second?
Yes, I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Braden?
Yes.
Councilman Cackle?
Yes.
Councilman Maye?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Okay. Last item is item G, Resolution twenty-five eighty-one.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving annual bids to recruit parking material for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Motion, please.
Say.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, this asphalt issue. Did you just deliver the rest?
Ask any questions?
Give me up, pay it up.
Pick it up? Give it up?
Pick it up. Okay. Where is, how was it located? Is it near Charleston, Houston? I don't know. From the bench.
Yeah, it does seem, it's the same.
Field box in Charleston.
I can't, I can't.
The reason why I'm asking that is, if we're going to have to pick it up, but we need to drive the route to St. John's, how was it? If it's in Charleston, Houston.
Our booking material.
Does that?
But that, that, both of these bids came in, so just about.
That's what I'm.
And, and I would, I would, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know why you're going to ever come in tonight, but. We should award it to, to the closest.
One.
One. Travel time, travel time, mileage, mileage and personnel time. So if the council feels bid, I would recommend that we award it to the one bidder that is closest to the city of East Ridge. Unless the both, unless, of course, they both come up, it just fits away. But I don't think that's the case here.
And could someone explain to me what, by the toughness index, it's a three hundred forty-four, fifty-five, hundred now. How does the base of that have to have down to sixty-five dollars? Price is based on the P dot, by the toughness index. And that changes up in the month?
It, it does change monthly. I don't.
So that's not going to affect?
No, 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 no. What we're paying, no, no, no. What we're paying, yeah, what we're paying is the bid on here basis, per ton.
So we're going to be going to tally construction, telling the southeast area?
I would believe so, because I, I don't know where Charleston, Texas is.
Yeah, it's, it's thirty, it's already.
All right, yeah, okay, we are going to town. Okay.
I'm making motion, I have a coach form.
Town, goes to town.
So we have a motion to accept the, well, I'm sorry, we had actually made a motion in a second, I believe, to accept the recommendation, so if we could withdraw. Yeah, if we could just withdraw that motion in a second.
I withdraw my.
I withdraw my.
Okay, so now, if you want to make a motion to accept.
Yes, we make a motion.
See, we have a coach form. And those, which would specifically be the tally construction.
Got you.
We have a motion and a second to approve tally constructions bid.
Well, just for clarification, now, what about Vulcan and, because that's different materials?
That's wrong.
I know, that's different materials. I mean, the only, the only company mentioned was tally construction. We're going to have to, we need to add Vulcan's.
Vulcan material is right up here.
How about, how about simply bid your motion to say you accept the tally construction bid for the asphalt, other street repair materials, and then take the recommended bids on the other materials?
Vulcan would be crushed down.
Okay.
I, I remint, remint my motion then, as the mayor said. So that'll be true.
You say it, you say it.
Right, the.
You know what you said.
So we're, we're going to accept the tally construction bid for the asphalt and other street repair materials, and then the Vulcan bid for the crushed stone.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Uh, with the, with the floor.
Okay, so that was. Just out of curiosity, did we receive any other bids for the topsoil?
No.
That was the one and only bid?
Yes, sir. That was the only other bid, only bid we received on the topsoil, we only received the one bid on crushed stone.
Okay, so is there, is there any one there, here that can, that can kind of shine some light on this bid from, from park? Is it comparable to what we pay? Does anyone know? For sixty topsoil, twenty dollars per yard, uh, per ton, per yard, and then a hundred dollars for delivery?
Where's topsoil?
Uh, well, potter's over here on Klausman. This house brings it up.
Can we go bid?
I'm not.
My understanding is it's a little bit, it's coming out a little bit cheaper this year.
Okay.
Before your bid was a bit cheaper?
Yeah.
And you might put your box down.
Well.
That would be a normal question.
And that's, you know, that, does this have to be approved tonight? I mean, is there a time crunch for us to, to get this approved?
No, I, I think, what I would say is, I think if you go ahead with the asphalt, other street, well, I, I don't know enough about the topsoil. No, I, I think, what I would say is, I think we can go ahead with the asphalt and other street, but I, I don't know enough about the topsoil, and I don't have a rep here that can just want that.
I guess it, in my, like, the, kind of, one of the nagging things that was playing in the back of my head as we talked about all this, I don't know if, if there was some other compelling reason why a Wausau paving was, was recommended, now, I would, I think it would be wise if we had.
And let's get a clarification delivered, or us go get it. To me, if, to me, it sounds like there's still possibly a question there.
I think you can go get it.
All right, I, I would like to make a motion to table this. Go next one.
The next meeting.
Might be, might lay it out while we vote. Just all of one school bid.
Right.
I do not take my motion back.
And, and, and if, if can, if, if staff would get a clarification on this, if, and, because again, it's not, uh, well, Vulcan, theirs is listed, it's four dollars and seventy-five cents delivery charge per ton. Let's just get a clarification on the, on the asphalt, set the delivery for us.
That would just go and get it.
And.
We've never had no asphalt, they never had no asphalt delivered, they just show, don't give.
Yeah, they go get it.
But still.
I, when we need, I, I prefer to be.
The Wausau, but they did have one, too.
Yeah, my preference would be here on the side of caution.
That would, does Buck, don't Buck and material carry asphalt?
I don't know.
They used to.
I don't know, so, Mr. Bradley has made a motion to table, we have a second.
I'll say, yeah, you thought.
Okay, yeah, motion to table next meeting.
We have a motion and a second, the table is until the next meeting. Roll call.
I'd like to do, do that, let's check that Buck and material, still get the asphalt, they used to.
All right, we have the roll call.
Vice Mayor Braden?
Yes.
Councilman Caddell?
Yes.
Councilman May?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
That's the last item of business we have on tonight's agenda. Thank you all for being here. And we will see you next time.